Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Regular Rancho Cordova City Council Meeting. And I ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood will be late. Vice Mayor Sander will be absent. And Mayor McGarvey.
Here. If you would announce the meeting, video recording, and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, August 21st at 6:00 PM, and Thursday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I'll call on Tony Peterson to lead us in the pledge, and then I can invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Michael Dak, retired United Methodist, or United Church of Christ pastor, will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good evening. Invite you all to be in prayer. Great and holy Creator God, we gather as leaders and citizens of Rancho Cordova, a diverse community made up of people who pray in different languages and who call upon you using different names. Many of us come to you seeking the same things. We pray for the health and well-being of our families and friends. We pray for healing, forgiveness, and renewal where relationships have been broken. We pray for economic security and secure neighborhoods. We pray for those among us who are suffering or struggling to get by. We pray that our children will be safe and have access to good education. Sometimes we pray for cooler weather or for rain. We pray that our local, state, and national leaders will make good choices, acting with wisdom and courage for the well-being of the whole community. And we give thanks. We give thanks for the blessings we enjoy, food and shelter, home and family, work and education, friends, neighbors, and community. We give thanks for committed community leaders, dedicated city staff, and engaged citizens. We give thanks for the freedom we enjoy to come together in this setting, to speak and to listen to one another, as we seek to make our community a better and better place in which to live and work. I offer this prayer in recognition that whatever our personal faith may be, we are all children of one Creator, brothers and sisters in the human family. Amen.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, on to our presentations. I'm gonna call on Assemblyman Ken Cooley to make a presentation honoring an act of heroism.
It's a pleasure, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues on the City Council here to be with you again. Mr. City Manager, thank you. What I would, what I'd like to do is just provide a little background to this resolution. And I think it's very fitting that we take this moment after the Pledge of Allegiance and an opening prayer to reflect upon something of great merit in our community. And I think of the Pledge of Allegiance we just prayed about, we just made our pledge, that great, that great uniquely American word embodied in the pledge, indivisible, which reminds us that we are all sort of together in this democracy of ours. We have a stake with one another. And then the prayer, which focused upon, there is one God, there are many faiths, and you prayed for the engagement of people in the community, one with another. And there was another element of having concern for one another, caring for one another, and the well-being of one another as a part of our civic life. And today, it's my pleasure to honor William Coke, Billy Coke, a gentleman here in the front row in the blue shirt, for an act of heroism that went way above and beyond what you might imagine any of us might be called upon to do. There was, well, as a backstory, I think it is good to look at two neighbors, Dr. Bueller, my dentist, his next-door neighbor, Jim Grauer, both of whom had the largeness of heart to open their lives to people around them. And you know, you never know how that works out, actually. I think it is such a commendable thing to be open to those around us who have needs. And it's hard to second-guess someone who feels that impulse, to be open to the needs of others. We certainly know that in life, we need people around us who are open to respond to those with needs around them. In this case, it's sort of like a tale of two cities, a tale of two circumstances. William Coke, Billy Coke, was a friend of Dr. Bueller and a guest in their home. And they were in their home, and the back door was open. And it became evident that there was quite a commotion that was unfolding in the backyard of Jim Grauer next door. And it was apparent that there was some sort of crisis that was emerging. And the crisis that was emerging was that a young man, who was the child of a friend of Mr. Grauer, who had had issues in his life, had returned to the Grauer home and was in the process of making very serious accusations against Mr. Grauer about circumstances affecting his life, and actually launching an assault with a meat cleaver on Jim Grauer. A man at risk of his life, actually. He bears the scars and the injuries that arose in this assault with a meat cleaver. And Billy Coke, who is trained as a US Army Ranger, having served four terms of duty in, now I'm, Iraq or Iran? And Afghanistan.
Iraq.
Iraq and Afghanistan, two terms each. Trained as an Army Ranger, also trained as a firefighter here in California, who, as he was in the home of the Buellers, heard the commotion and decided to run to the danger. What a character exhibition of your character that is, William, to take the opportunity to run to the danger. He was led to the fence which barred the access to Mr. Bueller, as would bar the access to me. But Billy hopped the fence and ran to the danger, proceeded to, with a few well-placed punches, as I understand it, disarm the attacker, keep him under control, and then attend to the injuries of Jim, to stabilize the situation until our Sheriff's Department, our police, arrived in force to back up the circumstance, get the medical care that Mr. Grauer needed. So this is all backdrop to just this idea of not withholding the good that is in your power to give, but doing it even at risk to yourself, which makes it very exceptional and makes it in that class of conduct we call heroism, selflessness. And I know Jim, to talk about it, used the term providential. How should it be that on this day when he is under assault, that there is someone like William Coke next door, who, without thinking of himself, jumped to intervene and did it as an individual? So exceptional. So I have, with that as backdrop, William, Billy, why don't you come up here? Let me, let me shake your hand, and then I'm gonna actually read this resolution, but I'll, I'll let you sort of help me and hold that. Whereas Californians have a special respect for individuals who possess a personal code of honor and conviction that impels them to carry out valorous acts as members of the United States Armed Forces, and to protect the welfare of others in the course of their daily lives, even at the risk of imperiling themselves. Included among the ranks of these exceptional individuals is William Coke, a decorated US Army veteran, experienced firefighter, and distinguished California resident, whose actions merit special public commendations. And whereas a San Diego native, Billy Coke joined the US Army on May 27, 2004, as an infantryman, and volunteered for airborne school during basic training, after which he trained as a paratrooper at airborne school in Fort Benning, Georgia, until October 20th, 2004. And whereas as a member of B Company, Second Brigade, 325th Airborne Infantry Regiment, Two slash Three Twenty-Five AIR, Billy deployed to Iraq with the 82nd Airborne Division in December 2004. And over the course of his subsequent service, he completed US Army Ranger School, a combat leadership course, in September 2006, and advanced to the rank of Sergeant, was deployed to Iraq two additional times, and to Afghanistan twice. And whereas as a team leader for the 82nd Airborne Division's Second Brigade Paratroopers, who had been deployed to Iraq during 2007, during the 2007 surge of US forces to restore security of the capital city of Baghdad, Billy was assigned with his fellow soldiers to the Adamea District, where he was often the first member of his team to confront extremely dangerous situations, including threats posed by lethal sectarian strife, daily raids, and encounters with Al Qaeda terrorists, and roadside bombs, suffering multiple injuries as a result. And whereas having fulfilled his US Army service with dignity and courage, receiving multiple Army commendations and achievement medals, Billy was honorably discharged and separated from active duty on July 3, 2008, after which he continued to serve in both the Army National Guard and Army Reserves before concluding his longstanding military tenure. And whereas as a civilian living in California, Billy trained and worked as a firefighter with a helicopter crew for the US Department of Agriculture's Forest Service and a Bureau of Land Management Crew at Folsom Lake. And while living in Sacramento, he heroically responded to sounds emanating from a fight next door on the night of September 3, 2014, by immediately running towards the house, where he found his 70-year-old neighbor being savagely attacked by a meat cleaver-wielding assailant. And with little regard for his own safety, he immediately subdued the assailant and then attended the victim, who had been grievously wounded, before the police and emergency medical assistance arrived. And whereas, whereas in the intervening year since, Billy has continued his firefighting duties with the US Forest Service in California. And as a self-effacing person who has never sought personal recognition or acclaim, he is nonetheless worthy of abiding respect and admiration of his fellow Californians. Now therefore, be it resolved by me, Assemblyman Ken Cooley, that I take great pleasure in commending William Coke for his valorous service to the nation, as a member of the United States Army, his selfless intervention on behalf of his neighbor, and your, and his dutiful firefighting efforts in the state of California. So it is an honor, William, to present this to you. We're gonna walk over here. Why don't you come around, Jim? I stand right behind you.
Billy also received Purple Heart.
Yes. That's great. Yeah. And he is a Purple Heart recipient. One of our earliest supporters, Adam Lindgren, former law, Cyrus City Manager, former Club Director, Father of Cityhood, also an original county manager. Yeah. That's a good touch. Thank you very much, and congratulations on the new All-America City Status, yet again.
All right, yes. Very good. Thank you, Ken, and thank you for being the person you are and helping the man when he was in real, real need. Thank you. That was wonderful. Okay, next, I'd like to call Mr. Bob Burns to accept a proclamation up here. In case anyone here has gone to any of our Memorial Day and Veterans' Day celebrations, you may recognize him. He's a master of ceremonies, he does all kinds of wonderful things, he's been working for, with us for quite a long time, and I'm so glad you're able to be here tonight.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation giving recognition to Lieutenant Colonel Bob G. Burns, retired. Whereas for decades, Bob G. Burns has worked tirelessly to help veterans and their families. He takes to heart the Elks' pledge, quote, "So long as there are veterans, the benevolent and protective order of Elks will never forget them," unquote. Bob is a past exalted ruler of the Rancho Cordova Elks Lodge 2484 in Rancho Cordova. For years, he was involved in the Catch the Spirit program, which the Elks Lodge provides year-round material support and food to families and military personnel posted overseas, returning injured veterans and families with special needs identified by local police and fire departments. And whereas since 2006, Bob has served on the Rancho Cordova Memorial Day and Veterans' Day Committee. Bob volunteers his time to ensure that veterans are honored for their service and sacrifice, and that local veterans from throughout the region have a place to go each Memorial Day and Veterans' Day. Bob attends monthly meetings, develops theme, and coordinates music selections for the ceremonies, and has served as master of ceremonies for more than a decade. And whereas his service doesn't stop here, he is involved with the dinner program called, excuse me, held at the Rancho Cordova Elks Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, has been involved with Vet Stock. It's an annual fundraiser that supports the homeless veterans programs in the VA Northern California Healthcare System. The financial support from this fundraiser provides housing, beds, food, clothing, fees, rental deposits, and more on household needs homeless veterans face while transitioning, transitioning to housing. And whereas in the fall of 2018, Bob was nominated by the General John A. Sutter Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution for the Outstanding Veteran Volunteer Award. In March of 2019, Bob was awarded the Outstanding Veteran Volunteer for the whole state of California by the California State Social Daughters of the American Revolution. That was no small feat, which there are over 100 chapters just in the state of California. Bob won, to place second nationally against all other state and level winners. And whereas Bob is a veteran of World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, and has earned the respect of the community and equally shows his respect to others, Bob may have made second, may have placed second in the nation, but he is first in the heart of Rancho Cordova. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize Bob Burns for his commitment to help veterans and their families. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 19th day of August, 2019. Thank you so much, Bob.
Thank you.
Come on, talk.
Not really.
Want a speech?
Photo op now.
Photo op, yes. You, you can't buy without that, you know that. You just listen to what the photographer says, and that's what you do, so.
Oh, yeah, I know. Got to smile, too.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don't shake the head.
Oh, sure.
Why not?
I saw you. That's right, it's right here.
Sure.
You know Stacy?
Yeah. So great to see you.
I'll come to you.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for your service.
I already got my hat.
I know. Thank you, sir.
I always tell my mom, she's a P.A.R. member, she should be.
Thank you.
May bring it back with you?
Come on, come on.
All right. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Call on Dr. Fazia. The name is gonna be killing me, so. Well, you say it.
This is Dr. Fazia Farazali.
Oh, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I am absolutely elated to be amongst you all today. I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the president for Chamberlain University here in Rancho Cordova. And just a little bit about myself. Academically, I have a Master's of Science in Nursing and a Doctorate in Education. In terms of my career span, it's two decades, so since my mom's womb, you know, of course, because I'm still in my twenties. That was a joke. But it, it has revolved around being in healthcare, being in education, of course, regulatory bodies, in, and also in terms of education, not just nursing education, but most recently I was at Cedar Sinai Medical Center, where I was overseeing all of the medical students, third and fourth year at, that are in UCLA, providing, looking after the program curriculum development and so forth, and then also, of course, the nursing aspect of it, continuing medical education. I am, I am really excited about being in Sacramento. I have never been in Sacramento before, and I gotta tell you, in talking about Chamberlain, you know, we, we thrive on the aspect of Chamberlain care. And what that consists of is students being provided the type of education that is going to propel them to be extraordinary nurses. It's amazing that I'm here amongst you all today, because the students were actually at the Capitol Building, we had about 50 of them advocating for the rights and patient care services for, for, for the community. And one thing that I want to share with you is, you know, I've always said within my career, you know, you role-model those behaviors that you want to see in others. I want to give special recognition to Mayor McGarvey and Cyrus and Maria, because when I first came on, my first, first month, my assistant reached out and said, hey, you know, would you like to meet this new president, Chamberlain? And they met with me, but they didn't just meet with me just to, you know, meet with me for five, 10 minutes, shake my hand or anything, but they actually took the time, almost an hour, providing me with the background about this wonderful city, and really went deep-dived into what kinds of needs there are for the community and all the things that they do. So I wanted to be here today to actually acknowledge that, because a lot of times, they don't get those accolades, and I was just so overwhelmed by their graciousness and the time that within the next, I've been here about two and a half months now. So within the last month, after meeting with them, I've met with the leadership in the community for the homeless population. So the nursing students at Chamberlain University have now two different community rotations where they will be providing services to the, to the homeless population, halfway houses, and just really making sure that we're, we're deep-diving into that. This coming weekend, I will be providing a mental health-related presentation on how to be proactive on mental health to the women's group here in Rancho Cordova. So I just wanted to say, you know, I am really excited. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you so much for the warmth that you've provided me, and I just look forward to really collaborating even further and making sure that we do everything possible to really enrich the lives of these citizens here in Rancho Cordova. I thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Peterson to come up to the podium, please. Mr. Peterson, that's principal, you're a principal, you're always a principal.
I think so. No, retired, I'm not.
This is a proclamation giving recognition to Tony Peterson's service through Rancho Cordova as a principal. Whereas Tony Peterson has been a teacher and administrator for 37 years, and has led with distinction for 12 years in the city of Rancho Cordova as a principal with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. And whereas Tony was the principal of Cordova Meadows Elementary School from 2000 to 2007, during which the school won the International Reading Association Exemplary Reading Program Award for California. And whereas the school also won academic achievement awards two years in a row, and whereas the school earned the title of California Distinguished School. That's wonderful. Whereas Tony planned, created, and opened River View STEM Academy in Rancho Cordova. And whereas Tony was the principal at River View STEM Academy from 2014 to 2019, during which the school's enrollment soared to capacity, and where there is now student waiting lists. Whereas exemplary test scores for students in River View STEM occur consistently each year. Whereas the school is also the top-performing elementary school in both the district and county, and has the highest math scores in the district. Whereas Tony has been honored as the Educator of the Year by the Rancho Cordova Rotary Club in 2005, was honored with the Silver Star Award with the Association of California School Administrators in 2008, and was named Administrator of the Year by the Association of California School Administrators in 2016. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby honor Tony Peterson and encourages all to participate in honoring the spirit of this celebration as an important event in the history of our city and its social vitality. In witness whereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 19th day of August, 2019. Thank you for everything you've done for us, mainly for our kids. That's been great.
Yes. Thank you.
Just briefly, I met Bob in 2000 when I came here as the principal of Cordova Meadows, before it was Cityhood. And at that time, you guys were honoring a former student of mine from Mayfair Youth Academy. So you guys have been doing this a long time, and as Maria said to me- the fact that you all know that Rancho Cordova really does care about the educational growth and development and success of all of our kids. And of course, for those of you who don't know, Rancho Cordova voters, many of whom are sitting in the back, also approved our community enhancement fund, and a significant amount of that is used every year to fund a lot of different programs at the schools that would not be possible if it were not for the generosity of our voters. So now, we're going to continue with this theme by honoring National Reading Month and International Literacy Day. And we have a variety of partners, like Tony said, nobody does this alone. And so, of course, in this effort, we're joined by the Sacramento Public Library, we're joined by the Friends of the Library, and we are joined tonight by the Sacramento Library Foundation, and I'm going to ask the executive director, April, to come and join me.
Can I bring some friends?
She's brought peeps. So, this proclamation is given in recognition of Literacy Day, September 8, 2019. Whereas September is National Reading Month, and whereas September the 8th is International Literacy Day. And whereas reading and writing are fundamental tools needed to participate fully in our country's democracy. And whereas reading and writing are essential to accessing new skills in a continuously changing technical and service-oriented economy. And whereas literacy is an equity issue affecting three out of five Sacramento County children who are not reading at grade level and face greater barriers to higher education and career development. And whereas children who do not read on grade level by fourth grade are four to six times more likely to drop out of high school. And whereas elected officials, nonprofit organizations, schools, and businesses have been working together to make literacy a community-wide value and a civil right. And whereas the city of Rancho Cordova has all the ingredients to be a leader in literacy. And whereas a thriving, growing, learning community is a community of readers and writers. So therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim September the 8th as Rancho Cordova Literacy Day, and we urge all of our residents and our civic organizations to read, donate time and resources, and to volunteer to create a culture of literacy for all members of the community. And Bob signed that, signed this proclamation today. You know, we were all impressed when we did a study mission to Austin a couple of years ago, and Diane, I'm not sure you were there, but the Austin Chamber of Commerce and the Austin Civic Government knows exactly how much an educated person is going to contribute to their economy. And conversely, they know how much that person is going to cost city services in Austin if that person does not get an adequate education and succeed in some sort of a job field of any sort. We thought that was incredibly enlightened. So April, it's my pleasure to present this to you and encourage everyone, as it says, to participate in International Literacy Day on September the 8th.
Thank you.
So you've brought people you'd like to introduce.
I have, I have. So I, this is a big effort that many of us are involved in, the Sacramento Public Library, the Sacramento Public Library Foundation. Today, with you, also with us here are also Julius Austin, he's Promise-owned SHRA and on the foundation board. Hadley is the executive director of, well, I don't need it, 916, Inc. Laurie Hock is the marketing director for Murphy-Austin. Robert Honnicker does big things over at Anthem Blue Cross. Elise Spang is part of the Central Valley Foundation and very focused on early childhood development. Samia Stigler from City Year Nationally Now, and Dan, also Dan Zabor from the foundation. We are part of, what, 30 people, and actually Julius would like to just read a statement so you kind of know how this all came about and why we're doing this. And we appreciate that you guys were so easy and put us on the agenda and, you know, agreed to do this along with all the other folks who are doing it. Thank you so much for that. Julius, you want to say a word or two? Thank you guys so much.
So, good evening, mayor, city council members, city staff, and especially those out in the audience. On March 3rd of 2019, a group of 30-ish Sacramento citizens came together to talk about creating a children literacy movement in Sacramento County. In the room, there was literacy providers, the library, as we've mentioned, educators from elementary and high schools, and also CSUS, corporate and individual philanthropists, and policymakers, including Sacramento City Councilman Agar. Today, we ask that all policymakers be aware that our children need to be able to read, all of our children, right? After years of effort, Sacramento has moved the needle from a rate of 34% reading at grade level to 45% reading at grade level. And while the gains are good, they are not enough. Reading is the gateway to becoming a productive and engaged member of society that votes. You also mentioned the necessity of education to produce citizens who are able to contribute to societies. You must be able to read to vote, right? By establishing September 8th Sacramento Literacy Day, we line up with International Literacy, excuse me, International Literacy Day, which is appropriate for the internationally diverse place Sacramento County is today. And we create an opportunity for everyone to focus on this problem, which we know is all of our problem. Along with the city of Sacramento's, the city of Rancho Cordova's proclamation made today, Sacramento County, Outgrove, Citrus Heights, and also the city of Sacramento have all agreed to making the same proclamation. This is the beginning of everyone realizing that reading is critical to healthy, productive, and equitable society. So thank you all.
Leave the lawyer. I figured the crowd wasn't digging us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Some wonderful proclamations and presentations. Right now, I'm going to ask our city clerk, city, Stacey Leitner, to introduce a new city employee.
Mayor, council members, and city staff, I'd like to welcome Persephone Riley to our city clerk team and to the city of Rancho Cordova. Persephone is joining us as our assistant city clerk, and I am going to let her introduce herself.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Persephone Riley. I come to your city from about 30 miles north in the small city of Marysville, population 12,000, so this is quite a difference. I applied for this position because I was looking to work in a bigger city. I'm very fond of the Sacramento Valley, and I was hoping to start a career here. So far, everyone at the city has been very warm and welcoming, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you.
Welcome.
Very good. Well, I'm glad you came here and I could see what a wonderful city it is. So you're right, it's here. So I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. On the public comment, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on which the agenda will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to seek, keep comments to three minutes or less, and the state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action across, arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any cards?
We have one speaker card, and that is Diane Rogers.
You feel tall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Diane Rogers and have the privilege of just serving as the president and CEO of Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to take a few moments today to express my thanks and gratitude to the city. Last Thursday, we held our ninth annual business expo, and we were pleased to welcome over 100 vendors, and we are estimating right now approximately about 800 guests and visitors. And yes, it was just a wee bit warm. In nine years, we've never had a weather issue, and this was the year we decided to move everything outside. But it was very successful, and in large part, this is our opportunity to connect the business community with other businesses and members of the community by moving it outside. Many of you know we have had it half inside the American River Rooms and the other half out on the other side, but it's just gotten so big and popular that we moved everybody outside to the north parking lot, and I think visually it was excellent. And one of the other advantages, we had a lot of people actually stopping when they saw all the, everything going on, and pulling over and parking and walking in to see what we were having here. So it was, we were grateful for that. But most importantly, I want to express my appreciation and gratitude to your city staff and particularly the facilities team. Those folks got up at 6 o'clock in the morning, they were here at 6 o'clock in the morning, which tells you they got up earlier than that, put up 100 tables, 200 chairs, tents, everything else that goes along with that, and we could not do this event without them. And we are very, very grateful for their support and appreciation. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that they do and thank them for their service, but also offer my appreciation to city staff. I know it's an inconvenience, and a lot of you are very kind enough to park off-site. We have a little contest. Thank you, everybody, for doing that. But I know it's an inconvenience and that they do make that effort to park off-site so that we have plenty of parking spaces for people to visit our city hall, visit our community, and visit and connect with our businesses. So it's just my opportunity to say thank you and how much we appreciate the support of the city and in particular, facilities team. So thank you very much.
Well, as a customer of the event, my contact was very successful, so I hope everybody else felt the same way.
Well, that's the way it works, with those connections and those relationships, so.
Yeah, the business community was impressed at how many people showed up in 150-degree weather. And it was amazing, and I didn't hear anyone say that didn't come all the way of lead, so, you know, that's the most important thing for them. That, and they ate all my lumpia in less than 11 o'clock. It's getting ridiculous at this point. That was 700. That took me two days of rolling.
Well, yes, I'm sorry, you had to exert that extra effort on behalf of your own community, so. But thank you, and we did have a huge variety of businesses, some new ones, some new businesses that are reaching out in the community, and overall, I think, other than the few comments of like, could you do something about the weather, so we'll work on that element of it. But anyway, thank you, and thank you, Cyrus, for a wonderful team. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Your happiest customer was my four-year-old granddaughter. She got all kinds of stuff, so she was happy.
Stuff is the name of the game, and I know she got to play a little golf in the middle of it, too, so that'd be great. Thank you all very much.
Do we have any else, anyone else who would like to speak that didn't turn any of the cards?
I got one.
Thank you, welcome.
My name is Court Straffel. I've been here before. I'd say most of you know me. We used to meet before the, before it became a city. And since that time, and I'm not sure if you're going to cover this road and if you're going to take care of Armon Drive and answer that, then I will stop here. But if you don't have an answer right now for me, then I'll ask it. Are we going to discuss any of the roadwork here? I didn't see it on the agenda. Okay, two, six months ago, I came in and I asked, how many miles of streets do we maintain in this city? The answer was, I don't know. I'll have to look. Do we have an answer yet?
Well, we have.
The city manager was addressed at that time. Did you get an answer yet?
Excuse me, I think the mayor was about to tell you that there's something on the agenda that might be discussing this.
Okay, I see that we just dodged the question. The answer would be no. We have no idea how many streets, which I find unacceptable. We've been a city for 13 years. Part of what you do is take care of the streets. I have talked to the city engineer, they have already hooked a proposal. Armon Drive itself has had a rating, a PC or whatever it's called rating, between 30 and 31.
I'm sorry, sir, I think, I believe the mayor may have been trying to point you towards item number 12.2. Is that the five-year pavement rehabilitation plan that might address your comments in detail?
Is Armon Drive specifically on there?
That's the report in which I believe the public works director would attest that we comprehensively address all pavement.
As of today, that road is non-serviceable according to any kind of rating that they go by nationally. It's become a national, it's a national, our street is in, is not in need of repair, it's in need of replacement, not in five years either.
You're absolutely welcome to discuss that with us tonight, but it would just be under that item.
Okay.
It'll be the last item, it's a five-year pavement rehabilitation plan, I'm sure that will be in there. So thank you, and come back again later this evening.
Yeah. 240 Senate law laws.
Okay, anyone else now that would like to speak? Okay, thank you for that, then I ask.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are there copies of this in the back?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And while you're talking, you're next on the agenda, Donald, our council reports.
I don't know, about two or three or something.
Anyways, the answer to your questions in this packet. Let's see.
There's a copy of economic development, but not the one.
Oh.
What page?
Which one? I don't know, she was handing it. Oh, the pavement plan's not. Thank you, welcome.
My name is Cora Strathfield. I've been here before. I'd say most of you know me. We used to meet before, uh, the, uh, before it became a city. And since that time, and I'm not sure if you're going to cover this road, and if you're going to take care of Armon Drive and answer that, then I will stop here. But if you don't have an answer right now for me, then I'll ask it. Are we going to discuss any of the roadwork here? I didn't see it on the agenda. Okay, two, six months ago, I came in and I asked, how many miles of streets do we maintain in this city? The answer was, I don't know. I'll have to look. Do we have an answer yet?
Well, we have, um.
The city manager was addressed at that time. Did you get an answer yet?
Excuse me, I think the mayor was about to tell you that there's something on the agenda that might be discussing this.
Okay, I see that we just dodged the question. The answer would be no. We have no idea how many streets, which I find unacceptable. We've been a city for thirteen years. Part of what you do is take care of the streets. There, I have talked to the city engineer. They have already hooked up proposal. Armon Drive itself has had a rating, a PC or whatever it's called rating, that'd be between thirty and thirty-one.
I'm sorry, sir, I think, I believe the mayor may have been, uh, trying to point you towards item number twelve point two. Is that the five-year pavement rehabilitation plan that might address your comments in detail?
Is Armon Drive specifically on there?
Uh, that's the report in which I believe the Public Works Director would attest that we, we comprehensively address all pavement.
As of today, that road is non-serviceable according to any kind of rating that, that they go by nationally. It's become a national, it's a national, our street is in, is not in need of repair, it's in need of replacement, not in five years either.
You're, you're absolutely welcome to discuss that with us tonight, but it would just be under that item.
Okay.
It'll be the last item. It's a five-year pavement rehabilitation plan. I'm sure that will be in there. So, thank you, and you can come back again later this evening.
Yeah. Two hundred and forty center line miles.
Okay, anyone else now that would like to speak? Okay, and thank you for that. Then I ask.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are there copies of this in the back?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And while you're talking, you're next on the agenda, Donald, our council reports.
I don't know, about two or three or something.
Anyways, the answer to your questions in this packet. Um, let's see.
There's a copy of Economic Development Department.
Oh.
What page?
Which one? I don't know, she, she was handing it. Oh, the, oh, the pavement plan's not in the back. Got it. Um, let's see.
Actually, there is something in the binder.
There you go. Thank you.
It's page three of the PowerPoint. Says that there are two hundred and forty center line miles.
Um, I think there's only a couple of things I want to report. The first was, I had the opportunity to address or speak with the BIAs, Highway Fifty-whatever group. I don't know what they're called today, the East Area Builders Association. Mainly, you know, very good comments about things moving forward, with some larger developments and other things coming along. So, I, I'm really, really pleased, I think, with, I think where the, the tone of those meetings have gone, because I have gone in there and they've expressed frustration on, on a whole host of issues, and really didn't have that feeling this time. So, kudos to staff and everybody else. I know it's a very, very busy season right now, and there's a lot of permits being pulled, and it seems like we're keeping up with, with their demands and the market demands, so that's really great. The only other thing I, I would share is, uh, we had a board meeting last week for the Sacramento Children's Museum, and looked over their draft of their visioning and site plan for, for the space over there. Uh, I was really pleased with what it, what it looked like. Uh, there's still some stuff to, to clean up, I think, with it. I, I want to say staff is meeting with them pretty soon here, but the Board of Directors has kind of given the blessing on what, what they've done so far. Um, so I'm really pleased, I think, from where we were a few months ago to today is really, really promising. Um, and hopefully, we can, um, work out leasing in other parts for, for that space in the not-too-distant future and get started on this project. But there's been a lot of progress made in the last five or six months, so I, I want to commend the museum staff, our staff, and everybody who rolled up their sleeves and got to work on this.
Okay. Well, um, my report is brief also. We, a whole bunch of us went over and rode Ollie over in the parking lot across the street from us. And Stacy, I did see Ollie today. He's actually over there running around. So, if you want to be treated to a, um, a hilarious ride on a, um, a funny little trolley that, that reminds me of the, um, Surrey with the fringe on top, with the eyes and glass curtains that roll right down, because the whole thing was made on a, on the world's biggest 3D printer, and it looks like these, uh, plastic curtains, eyes and glass curtains roll down on either side of it. It's really very funny, but it's just absolutely adorable. Um, and it's nice to have something like that come to town because I would remind everyone again that the bus service is changing on this eighth of September. And I know we have, uh, people who are aware of which bus routes are going to be lost, but I think this is going to come as a surprise for a lot of Rancho Cordova. And so, I truly encourage anybody who is, who finds that they are not able to get from point A to point B the way they used to be, to please report that, because the only way we're ever going to make an impact on regional transit is to, is to let them know. I've already heard from a couple of people who, um, whose kids have been completely disenfranchised from, uh, things they were participating in, activities they were participating in. Um, and, and then the only other thing I want to say is that, um, we have a workshop coming up next week, and the topic of the workshop, from my perspective, is very exciting, talking about, um, a project strictly for seniors here in Rancho Cordova, residential projects strictly for seniors. And I really encourage people to come out and, um, get that information firsthand, because we, we've always known we had a need, we've always wanted to fill that need, we've not been able to make much progress toward that, and finally, for the first time, we've actually got, um, more than one proposal. And so, everybody is absolutely welcome to come and, and hear, hear the latest information. Thank you.
Really, can I just, I just want to point out for the member of the public that had that question, the answer to your question is on page one hundred and forty of today's agenda, and it's two hundred and forty center line miles.
What's a center line mile?
Stick around, we'll be discussing it later. All right. I have a big, long, giant list, because it's crazy. All right, so first, I, I, guys, you got a big list. Cool Rancho Cordova breakfast with all the business owners. We've added another ten, so, uh, every month, it seems like ten to twenty new businesses come to Rancho Cordova because of the affordability. Um, I got to demolish my first building, though they did not bring me a sledgehammer and fitted me with a shovel, and then said, "Go to town" on a wall. So, I tried. I whacked the wall a lot with the shovel. That's not fair. I point out that I wanted a sledgehammer, but.
So, you're saying that nothing fell over?
Nothing fell over, and it just laughed at me as it bounced back at me, but we did get to.
We were never actually allowed to use those sledgehammers, we just did anyways, but nobody ever gave us permission.
See?
Just telling you.
I'm just saying, you have me there to demolish a building, I'm going to go to work on the building. Very exciting, there's, huh?
The building's gone, so you can't do it.
I know. Sorry, there's going to be something else, we'll shut down, and I'll get it. I got to ride on Ollie, very exciting. Exciting to see this kind of technology come to our city, and, so, just so everyone knows, good job, economic development, we are the first city to ever have this autonomous vehicle. It'll be something cool, because what you really see it is, it'll be a way that people can go from our light rail station into like, the Target shopping center someday, and they said they're even willing to set up a couple of the Ollies in our city and actually try that kind of route. So, bringing them to either like, the Chili's, and then to the Light Rail, and from the Light Rail to the, um, possibly the Target thing, they said, once this goes well, they are willing to try some other things and see how that would work. Yeah, I know they're not allowed on public streets, but somehow, that's Adam's problem. Met with the STA governing board. We're doing really well on the budget, and we are working on trying to get more money for our roads, and that's my big thing. Hampton Renovation, looks great. Our hotels are getting better and better as we're adding more. Soccer season started, as you know, come out and watch all the kids. We are growing as a city, and there is more and more kids and need for coaches and refs. So, I promise I won't yell or get kicked off the field this year. Met the Lancers. Our football team's looking really good. We beat up on somebody last week in the football sense, but we have a good football team, great to see. Surm Optimus, I didn't know this, but my family is, my, my cousin is the regional something, and so, I, this, ah, so, I went to them. I'm really proud of them because of all the stuff they do for women and the community. They're big and humble and eureka. They're one of the main places that, uh, girls go to get education and scholarships, and so, I'm glad of everything they do. Interfaith Council is great. They are doing stuff to help out the community. They got some new events coming alongside that hopefully they'll be partnering with each of the, the different churches or trying to grab, come alongside the different schools, and hopefully, doing something with, um, Saint John Vianis. Really interesting discussion on artificial intelligence. For all you nerds out there, we got to see a guy who came into the big stuff on AI, and how eventually we'll be interfacing with the city. Amazing job, Diane, always. I, I feel sorry for you to have to try to corral that many business owners into one area in the heat. Good job, city staff. Cyrus, good luck coming alongside them and making sure that the tents were up. I didn't hear any complaints. I mean, they complained about the weather, but that's Donald's job to control, and not, not yours. Um, and lastly, something that's near and dear to my heart, and I know Donald's heart is the kickoff of the Rancho Cordova Promise Program, where Rancho was the first ones to offer, uh, money to be able to help off our kids going to junior college. Now, if you go and get that waiver, um, you actually can get money for books. So, it's one way that we are helping us business owners, not only to educate our community, but also have jobs right out of college. So, it's great. That was all I did.
Thank you. You know, is it the kickoff for the, this year's Promise Program? You know, when we began, we started with a hundred thousand dollars to help the kids in the college, and we now have a hundred and fifty thousand, that's going to be twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And with the state doing that, uh, new legislation that will pay for the first year, then our money can help pay for other fees, for textbooks, for other things like that. And that's one of the really nice things about it, is that you work together on something like that, and you have, um, about two hundred kids so far who have been taking advantage of the Promise Program. They're at Folsom Lake College here in Rancho Cordova. So, it's been, um, very wonderful to hear them and to see them, right after we had the kickoff and the speeches from the president of the Folsom Lake College, and then from the, uh, Los Rios Community College District, and then they all went off and went to class. So, it was pretty nice to see them, just that many people there, just listening and finding out what they can about their college, and then they went back to class. They went to work. So, it was a very promising thing, and they're doing, it looks like they're going to be working on the not-too-distant future of the next building, right next door to the one we have already there at the campus. So, um, there may be a need for another, um, bond, but we'll have to see on that. But right now, it looks like they're going to have the, um, planning for the next college building to go in there on Folsom right next to the one we have already. So, that's what I've got right now, so I'm going to go on to our, um, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'll be very brief. Just wanted to, uh, recognize our own very, uh, very own city attorney, Adam Lindgren, who has been recognized as, uh, one of the best lawyers in America in the 2020 edition of the, um, the Best Lawyers Magazine. Uh, you may not know exactly what the publication name is, but it's the best lawyer in America publication.
Oh, my goodness.
This is, uh.
Hey.
This is quite an accomplishment. This is a recognition that is based on nominations by peers and, uh, people, area of expertise, and, uh, based on their knowledge and based on the good work that lawyers have done in their specific field. Adam's, um, area of expertise is municipal law, and, uh, obviously, this is a well-deserved recognition, and congratulations, Adam. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah. Onto item number nine, then. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of the consent calendar, items nine point one through nine point six.
Just to make sure, we're, we're pulling a public hearing item, right? Or no?
Ten point one.
Ten point.
So, I would like to bring.
The consent public hearing, okay.
I would like to bring one thing to your attention on item number nine point four. So, one of the recitals has been, um, updated to the resolution, and a copy has been placed in front of you, and a copy has also been placed in the back, yes, for the public. So, we did want to bring that to your attention.
What?
It was paragraph number three.
Okay. Fine.
My, that's an important paragraph.
And that's the short, that, yeah, that's the long paragraph, too. Okay.
So, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent, and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
So, my question for the city attorney on this one is, do Garrett and I need to walk out of the room so that you can say that you're going to pull? Okay. So, yeah, we're, we're not doing ten point one.
So, do we, do you want a motion to continue it to a future, uh, agenda?
Are we allowed to vote on that?
We need to have, uh, continuing that forward and into the future, because we would not be able to vote on it tonight, so that's going to be done.
Well, I can't actually make a motion, because, well, they can vote to, to move it, can't they?
I don't believe so.
We, we don't need a motion to move it, given the lack of.
That was more what I was hoping.
I think, I think this will be considered as an item that does not meet quorum, so for the benefit of the audience, this, uh, this specific item, two members of the council have to recuse themselves because of the proximity of their homes to this project, and so, technically, we not, we do not have quorum for the item to be heard tonight.
This is usually Linda's problem, not ours.
So, so, so staff, staff will be continuing this item to the next meeting unless something changes or requests, different requests is made by the applicant.
All right. Thank you. So, ten point one will be forwarded to the next meeting. Number eleven, public hearing items, there are no public hearing items. On number twelve, on the agenda, regular calendar items, ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Economic Development Department Action Plan and Jobs and Talent Attraction Program.
Good evening, mayor, council, Micah Runner, Economic Development Department, Deputy City Manager. Can you hear me? Is this on?
It's on.
It's on. So, I'll, I'll move on to the, to this one here. So, thank you for, for having us here tonight. I'll provide just a, a brief introduction, and then have Laura Fickell and Amanda Norton, who will run through the rest of the presentation. Just a little overview, we have, we'll talk a little bit about some strategic goals that were presented to council and adopted a couple of years ago. We're continuing to talk about the strategic goals as a roadmap, but what we're really going to talk about tonight is what the Economic Development Department is doing on an ongoing basis and ongoing tasks, and then we'll talk a little bit about the nineteen-twenty action plan and some of the activities. And last, we'll actually be presenting a, a new program that we're presenting today for, for your consideration, and we're real excited about, not only that, that's moving forward, but all the activities that are part of our action plan. So, real briefly, just going through some of the focus areas that are in the strategic plan, we have business attraction, business retention, network building, marketing and visibility, and areas of collaboration. Little detail about what those are. Business attraction is really encouraging private business to, to make investment into the city. So, that's really attracting new business, new development, trying to incentivize, increase our diversity and our economy in Rancho Cordova. Business retention expansion, actually, a little bit easier typically than business attraction, which is actually growing your own, very important from an economic development standpoint. Growing your own business is sometimes easier than attracting new business, so really focused on, uh, the community, the business community, and growing our small businesses to create more, uh, investment into, into the city. Uh, the third area, networking building, marketing visibility, this is really generating pride, generating promotion, generating fun, attracting new residents, attracting new business, attracting new investment into the city, and then creating opportunities for the reputation to grow for Rancho Cordova. So, really doing things that put Rancho Cordova on the map, and trying to continue to do things that bring attention and positive attention and, and good development opportunities in the city of Rancho Cordova. The third is areas of collaboration, and really, this is a focus area on different things and partnerships with our different business partners. You'll hear some discussion tonight about, uh, our partnership with the Rancho Cordova Chamber, about Folsom Boulevard and partnerships we'll need to, uh, move forward with there. And so, this is really, uh, the fourth strategic area that will kind of, uh, couch these, these actions, these, these initiatives under. So, from a big picture, uh, we don't really want to come forward and talk about a strategic plan every year and redo a strategic plan. It's really building on the existing strategic plan and really giving some introduction about what we're going to be doing under that strategic plan and that strategic direction that the city is, uh, moving forward with. Uh, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Fickell to talk about, what does economic development do on a daily basis?
Thanks, Micah. I'm Laura Fickell, Economic Development Analyst, and I'm here to share what we do on a daily basis, um, but also ongoing tasks regarding, thank you, sorry, first day, here we go. Regarding business attraction, we're constantly responding to requests for information. These leads come from various channels like Open Counter, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Chamber, and other community members. I know you are all really good about connecting with us when you get leads, and we appreciate it. When those happen, when those come in, we look for potential locations, we share incentive programs, and also check zoning. And then we also partner and maintain those networks for business attraction partners like GSAC. We also attend industry trade shows and. We also attend industry trade shows and conferences like the International Conference of Shopping Centers. We do study missions and go to cap to cap to generate leads. Those have been really fruitful in the past, and I know I'm looking forward to attending some this next year. Regarding business retention and expansion, we're often assisting with businesses to identify various funding sources, including our programs like the Sign and Facade Improvement Program. We also conduct regular outreach to our local businesses, as well as maintain our small business referral network, like the Small Business Development Center. We're really serving as a conduit for resources and troubleshooting. Regarding network building and marketing opportunities, these ongoing tasks related are regular check-ins with commercial real estate brokers since they are the boots on the ground when it comes to businesses coming and going. We also maintain our own economic development website, and we curate a quarterly newsletter that helps keep us in touch and top of mind with our businesses. We are working with the Cordova Community Council, Chamber, Travel and Tourism, and others dedicated to strengthening our business climate. It's very important to us. And in that vein of collaboration, nearly everything we touch is some form of collaboration. We collaborate both internally and externally to support the revitalization of sites along Folsom Boulevard. We're working with property owners to identify development opportunities in and around our business park. We're also serving as a single point of contact through development process, helping manage expectations and facilitate questions or concerns. With that, any questions? I'd like to welcome Amanda.
Hello. Good evening, members of the council. Amanda Norton, Economic Development Manager. So growing upon our strategy and what we do every day, we've developed our action plan going forward for this next fiscal year. So starting on the map, starting counterclockwise, we'll move, or clockwise, move around. So actually, opening today, we've got a little jump on it since we are mid-August here, the California Capital Film Office is officially open here in Rancho Cordova. Thank you. They will market Rancho Cordova and the surrounding cities to the film industry. And we anticipate the industry will generate critical transit occupancy tax dollars, that's called TOT, from our hotel stays, as well as boost our local catering and restaurants and other organizations that are needed for when they're filming. So they're looking for houses, or they're looking for cars. We have all of that here to offer in Rancho Cordova, and we think a lot of our businesses will be impacted well for that. We also have our jobs and talent attraction program. We've been working with Greater Sacramento to develop a competitive jobs and talent attraction program. I'll have more in depth on that as we move through the slides. We are also gonna be working on a healthcare feasibility study. We recognize that healthcare is a very important and top of mind for most of our residents, and healthcare needs are rapidly changing as our demographics change. So we will be looking to explore both healthcare needs that businesses can fill and kind of what's going on in the market. And as Laura previously mentioned, we do attend trade shows. This year, however, I'm the new chair of the Economic Development Director's Task Force, which is part of GSAC. So we will now have two seats on the board. And as that, we will be, as GSAC is really expanding in their marketing and outreach, they really need the local jurisdictions to become more actively involved. So we are gonna be participating more with GSAC this year, focusing on Cornet Summits, Bay Area, and Seattle Market visits, where we go and do active recruiting missions to those areas. We're also gonna be working on a fall and spring familiarization tour, where we bring site selectors in and drive them through the region to show them really what we have to offer, as well as South by Southwest, and then meet the consultants later on this fall. Some other areas we're working on, as many of you have probably heard, our Mather Chartered Air Service Project. We are working in collaboration with the Folsom Partnership and Greater Sacramento Area Council. And just for everyone in the audience, on Wednesday, we'll be doing our first test run of the service. So there will be a small group that gets on the plane, flies to the Bay Area, it will all be filmed, and the whole idea is so the people understand what it looks like, and this is an actual reality, and the timeline that it will take to do this. So we're pretty excited about that. If any of our local businesses are at home and are interested, please let us know. We'd love to have your input on this. Also, the thing we've really heard from council in the past is really looking as we have the largest master plan office park in the region. And as such, we don't wanna rest on our laurels, we wanna make sure that that office park remains viable and thriving, and that it's really modern, is becoming modernized to what the local and companies are looking for and for their employees, things like bocce ball courts and hammocks and jump bikes and the like. So we're gonna be working with a team to figure out what that, you know, plan will look like as we kind of move forward. Under our network building, marketing, and visibility, as we have two incentive packages that economic development currently oversees, and we're hoping to add a third to our toolbox this evening, we feel that our marketing efforts have gone out, but they can definitely be increased. So with this third tool in our toolbox, hopefully this evening, we're really looking to strengthen our incentive marketing so that more of our businesses, the region, and hopefully the state realizes the great efforts that we're doing both here in Sacramento, as well as in Rancho Cordova and Sacramento and in the region. We do have four opportunity zones. They are located on the northwest corner of the city, and these are pretty new to this, you know, United States as a whole, so we're really hoping that we can start putting together some collateral and let the different partners know that we have some viable options in those areas. We also have a couple sites that have not developed due to some infrastructure challenges, so we're gonna start exploring some grant opportunities, either through EDA, excuse me, that's the United States Economic Development Administration, or other funding sources that might help get the needed infrastructure to get those projects to fruition. In the Beryl District, one of my personal favorites, we worked really hard to get them up and running and collaborating as an organization. We really feel we need to put some more effort into getting that going. They've kind of hit a point where they're busy running their own businesses and could really use some additional systems to get back together and form a cohesive unit. And under our areas of collaboration, this is one thing that we do best in economic development, is we generally partner with various internal and external organizations. Folsom Boulevard activation is gonna be a big movement for us this year, especially with the mill station district creation. As you know, the city owns almost 10 acres on Folsom Boulevard, an offering memorandum was recently released, and we are gonna be basically, once those come in, we'll be helping to work with the developers and making sure that that vision on that site becomes a reality. Entertainment concept, we've heard loud and clear from our community that entertainment is something that is extremely needed and wanted in this community. We, as Laura mentioned, we attend the International Council Shopping Centers every year for, to try and recruit various entertainment concepts, and we will continue to do that until we can get one to land somewhere. We're hopeful this year. As well as we participate in Civic Lab, this is the second year of it, and we have some projects that we're looking at on Folsom Boulevard, and so that's gonna be, we're gonna be really actively engaged if those move forward. For small business support, we still love our small businesses. We're gonna be working closely with our building department to do over-the-counter permitting for smaller projects. And then also with our Chamber of Commerce, we recognize that there are a ton of things that they can, like, work in tandem with us, be it business walks, economic gardening. So we're gonna be working on that collaboration as we go forward and what things the Chamber's gonna be able to pick up. And then City Kilgore Site. So we own acreage right by the police department, and we are gonna be collaborating with the neighboring property owners. We started making the calls out there to see if there's a way that we all can work together to maximize what the potential uses could be on that property. And our new proposed jobs and talent attraction program. This program has been developed to really incentivize headquarters or scale-up firms that will create new jobs in Rancho Cordova. Our proposal is $2.5 million in funds that will be allocated over a 24-month period, and that would be up to $100,000 per company. There are some case-by-case exceptions that can be made, but that's the general rules of the program. The goal is to attract 500 high-wage jobs. And for all the data wonks out there, this, the $216 million in total economic impact was derived from Applied Economics Regional Project Assessment System. So in case you're wondering where we came up with all the crazy numbers, it's you run a formula based on the number of jobs and the payroll and what kind of economic impact that we would expect to see from this project. For the program criteria, we're looking to have 20 net new full-time equivalent jobs to receive $5,000 per job with a maximum award of $100,000. And by high wage, we're looking at jobs that are at least 125% of the average age, or average age, excuse me, average wage here in Rancho Cordova. And where we generally see companies with those salaries are either advanced manufacturing, management, professional services, and also anything usually in the life sciences sector we see as well. Then I'm gonna have Barry Broome from the Greater Sacramento Area Council come up here and speak to us. And all these companies should also be post-revenue or what have recently secured Series A or above round of funding. So we're really looking for not the small startups, but those businesses that have a proven concept and are actually looking to scale, which we feel that also our office vacancy rate is really set to bring those businesses to our city. And Barry?
What is our office vacancy rate?
It's about 10% currently. 10.3, I believe.
What's our industrial, is that?
Below 3%.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Please.
Good evening for having me. Congratulate the city manager, not only on this program, but all the great things that are going on in Rancho's Economic Development Department. It's always been a department with a great reputation, but I really think it's going to a new level. One of the things that is happening in the community that I think that's very exciting, you know, our reputation's starting to change in the marketplace. And of course, you know, we continue to work on higher-wage jobs that are tied to tradable sectors. So when you look back at 2008, you know, one of the reasons we came down so hard is, you know, we're so dependent upon government. And now if you look at our community in the last five years, we've gone from about 28% of direct jobs tied to government to about 22%. It's a remarkable turnaround. It really is. It's amazing. It's, it defies all numbers. We'd like to see that more like 15. So that means in the next 10 years, we gotta create 24,000 to 32,000 net new jobs that are tradable in nature. So this is always more than people want, so I promise I'm, I know, I'm already getting the look from Amanda. I will not do a PhD dissertation, I promise. But these tradable sector jobs can really explode, right? So, you know, we have, you know, a company that chose between Rancho and another community was a company called Applied Spectra. So when we announce these companies, we understated them for reasons of public transparency. So we announced that company and say, oh, it's, you know, 25 jobs. So somebody sees and says, oh, yeah, you know, these guys at Greater Sacramento announced 25 jobs, big deal. They all have PhDs from Berkeley, and they spun out of the Livermore Lab. Well, that's now 60 jobs already, and we think that's gonna go to 100 and 150 jobs. So we're working with these tradable sector jobs when they're in their 10, 15, 20, 25 level, you know, we're not competing with the governor of Texas with $100 million incentive package. So one of the things we've been doing in the region is we've been building two Centers of Excellence, a Mobility Center of Excellence with our universities. Arlen Orchard's been leading that from SMUD. And then, of course, you've heard about Aggie Square, which is UC Davis Development, but these are on like 25-acre parcels and 10-acre parcels. They're gonna build out really quickly around their invention, and now where are the companies gonna go? So we think Rancho's in a great position to pick up mobility companies, these life science companies, cell therapy companies. You know, we think there's an interesting conversion between California and North State, what they're doing with their teaching hospital and their dental school, you know, they're getting ready to put a big investment in Rancho. VSP just almost doubled in size with their acquisition. I think your building department can probably tell you all the exciting things that are going on at VSP. So we wanna be able to build a net new industry model, independent of government, focused on these tradable sectors. And, you know, we've had a couple of success stories. One of them is Zenify, which we got here from the city of Sacramento with $100,000 grant, four people. They're at 250 people now. And so, and all knowledge, all high-wage jobs. So our goal is a little bit different. We wanna bring in 25 tradable sector companies over the next 24 to 30 months. And then we think these companies are gonna come into Rancho because of the quality of life, the affordability, the accessibility. But these companies will also have access to kind of the technology work going on at the California Mobility Institute in Aggie Square. And I think we can start to, I really believe, I was watching this in Silicon Valley, I think we can start to really move Rancho into this knowledge center because, you know, it's all ebbs and flows. You know, now the city of Sacramento is almost the most expensive place in the region. You know, the rents are going through the roof. So what happens over time, you get some density, you get nice success, well, you don't have any land, so in a very short period of time, you start lopsiding your economic position. You saw where the council passed a rent control initiative. So we actually think even though a lot of these knowledge assets may be in the city of Sacramento or in Davis, the land's not in Davis, the land's not in the city, and we think, you know, Rancho, Folsom, Elk Grove, Roseville will be able to capitalize on it. And so you'll be first in market. We will, we have a venture capital partner in the community, we'll announce that next week, that's gonna put two $3 million cash injections on the table. So we go out and talk about Rancho, we won't just be talking about, here's a nice place to live and locate, here's your venture capital relationship, three $3 million obligations will be put in the market, here's your partnerships with UC Davis, Sac State, here's your partnership with the Mobility Center. And we need to continue to push this because, you know, we're doing very well, but it's very tough to break through in Silicon Valley, because, you know, every governor in the United States there, we're still getting off the ground. I think this will help us retain companies in California as opposed to leaving, and I think we can start to really build a net new industry cluster in the region, but also in Rancho. So it's a, it's a very exciting program, and we're gonna build a lot of other capabilities and assets around it that I think will bring real benefits to the community.
So I have a question. So you're distinguishing between just what's generically classified as tech jobs and knowledge jobs. What's, what's the, what's the find, nicety part, the find it part of that?
Well, we're, well, first off, you know, we've had a tough time with tech jobs because we don't produce software engineers. So when you're talking about tech, people sort of default to software engineers. But knowledge jobs aren't necessarily software engineers, right? Healthcare jobs are knowledge jobs. So jobs that require a college degree, a two-year technical degree, you know, the wages as you can steer in the $70,000 and up range. And, and, you know, we already have a company we're talking to about this program that's in Silicon Valley, 25 people, they're already doing $10 million in sales. I mean, what do you think the profitability looks like at 25 people? So there's a debate on whether or not they can come to our community, but it's been going back and forth, and we actually have half the partnership agreed to come here. So a company like that's gonna come here, they're gonna bring young professionals, they're Berkeley-Stanford grad, they're gonna move in to Rancho, they're gonna move into the space, but they're really an online digital company, so they're not really tech in the purest sense of the word.
Sure. No, it's, it's a very timely conversation, given both the article in the V this morning, as well as an article that is on the ULI newsletter today about the fact that tech jobs are growing most rapidly in kind of out-of-the-way places like Tucson and somewhere in the Midwest. You know, which, and Tucson is probably associated a lot with Raytheon, but, but it, you know, my thought is always, well, we ought to be able to get some of that, too.
Yeah. We should be doing better, but, you know, this has just been, you know, we kind of coming back from the, you know, sacrotoilet comments and things like that, you know, we kind of hit up here for 30 years, so it's gonna take more than a few years. But I do think, you know, I would just say, I was in LA last week, we have, we have really good traction in Los Angeles, we have really good traction in Seattle. And I think what it's gonna take is, you know, we're gonna have some announcements, I think, over the next three months, that are gonna put the community in a completely different category from a reputation standpoint. And, you know, we're just, we just gotta keep working and getting more eyes on us and get people to talk about us more. And then, you know, a little bit of an incentive like this gets us in the door to talk about them. And, you know, if we can convince a company with 25 people that are all Stanford and Cal people in Silicon Valley to move up here and locate, well, you know, they got a good reputation, they're doing well in sales, and then that'll start to, you know, just like Bay Area people moving here, right? I mean, if you know, I mean, I know you know this, I've learned that, oh, you know, Bay Area, nobody...
I took your class.
Yeah, nobody will ever move up here from the Bay Area, right? That's what the tech companies told us for years. Oh, if we told people from the Bay Area that they had to move to this area, you know, it'd be the end of the world. Well, you know, 30,000 are moving here a year now, and only 2,300 moved to Austin. So, you know, a lot of the stuff we're working against is the myths against the market, and these are the kind of things that are really gonna help us.
So the, this modestly snarky but million-dollar question is, if the region had a slogan that was a little more exciting than farm-to-fork, would that help?
Yeah. And I think, and I think, yeah, and I think the key thing on that is, you know, you know, we always like to say, you know, and I, you know, we think we're the next big market in the US to take off. So we, we really do believe that, and I think the data's there. You know, we've, last four years, our economy's outperformed San Diego and Los Angeles. But, you know, the press still writes the same way, you know how that works. It takes a long time to get press to talk differently and media to talk differently and, and, but I, I think it's going in the right direction. I really do. I feel good about things.
I had a question. I know that when the Centene deal was done, there was a lot of talk about how Sacramento already had kind of... already had kind of in public that there was a formula for what they were going to do, right?
Right.
So if somebody was coming, th- this was the deal that was on the table. Clearly, that's what we're trying to get to with this. I just wanted to see if you could speak to, I'm, I'm assuming we're the, I haven't heard of anyone else doing this, another city in the county doing this. What kind of, how does this help you do your job, I guess, is the best way to describe it?
Well, a lot of times, like, I'll give an example of this company, we've been talking to this company for a year and a half. So the CEO wants to move here, and the chief techni- this is how it works, the CEO wants to move here, chick tech, chief technology officer does not. Chief technology officer's convinced that, you know, the magic dust down there is the only place in the world where they'll get their engineers. So one of the things, too, when they're thinking about moving, is they open up other options. And when you open up other options, you know, the salt lakes of the world come in and they'll put a couple million dollars on the table for this company. We may put 100 or 150 in a partnership with somebody. But then, you know, a lot of the people there are still re- resistant to moving out of California. So what we do is we go down and we show them the labor turnover rate for leaving California. When these companies leave California, in all honesty, at the end of the day, nobody goes with them. They basically, whether they move to Texas, they got to rebuild their entire company. So on 500 jobs, that average cost is $21 million. So now you're Denver and you go, here's $25 million incentive for these 500 jobs. And so, well, you're going to spend that rehiring everybody once you go to Denver and the kids all back out on the deal and Google calls them and they leave. You know, what would it look like if you came into the Greater Sacramento region? And a lot of these professionals thought, well, yeah, I'm going to be an hour and a half away, I can still see my mom, you know, I can still see my dad, I can still go to the Giants, I can go to the 49ers. And I think that's kind of how we've been working with this company, that we can convince them that, you know, you're going to be able to move here and not turn over your people. But what do you do for your top five engineers that are in a lease? So now if that company moves here and you say, look, we'll give you a $100,000 development grant, all of a sudden they can go and those top five engineers or top 10 engineers go, look, we'll, we'll pay for your relocation to Rancho, we'll pay the cash to break the lease, the venture capitalists or the investors in the company, you know, they're made whole on the move. And now it just makes it a little bit easier for the company to move. So it'll give us an audience with the venture groups, which I think is really important. I mean, you know, we still have a broader strategy around this we don't have nailed down, but, you know, there are firms down there now that the venture funds are reaching out to saying, I've got all these cool, young portfolio companies, I got to get them out of here. You know, we've been talking to these firms about building a direct pipeline between us and our community, and they go, well, what will you do for these Series A, Series B rounds of 20? Well, hey, I'll give you $100,000 to soften the relocation and then continue to work with the state, I'll get you a partnership with UC Davis, I'll get you a partnership with Sac State. So we're going to get in to see people we otherwise wouldn't. The other thing it's going to do is it's going to be a nice brand lift for Rancho. You know, I mean, this will get traction, this will get picked up in the press, you know, this will get covered in the San Jose Business Journal. And, and, you know, I think, you know, a lot of these moves, you get it back in brand alone, which is hard to calculate, but, but brand's very powerful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So something you were saying earlier about the Sacramento and Davis not having the property, in Rancho Cordova, you have almost two-thirds of the city hasn't been developed yet. So, and then you've got Aerojet, which is outside of our city limits, but that's more
Right.
area that can be brought in. And it just, if you just look at what's there, the possibilities are almost endless.
Yeah, it really is. And I think, and I think, um, I think you'll start to see Aerojet move in the next 12 months in a positive direction. You know, so another thing that's happening right now is we're starting to get a lot of, of, uh, inquiries from Tesla's supply chain.
Okay.
So one of the things we've been doing, this mobility platform, is, you know, not only are we going to create-
Tesla's supply chain needs a significant help.
Yeah, right.
It takes four months to get anything repaired.
Yeah, well, not only that, but guess where their supply chain is? It's in Detroit, where the automotive industry is. So Tesla's supply chain is thousands of miles away, and it's a traditional supply chain for GM, Ford, and Chrysler. So, you know, we've been trying to get Tesla's attention, we can build a supply chain for you, tie you back to the California Mobility Center, provide hardware services, you know, provide battery services, you know, we can get you connected to the California Resource Board, which of course is instrumental in the creation of your company. And really, when you start looking at, uh, the proximity to Tesla, it's worth a slight wage lift for Tesla.
Well, and besides, we have so much in the way of automotive repair, from in the mom, from the mom and pop to, to six different cultures that are involved and, and, you know, all the way up to actually high-tech racing. And the only place in this region that will repair a Tesla or provide authentic repairs is up in Rockland.
Yeah.
And that's illogical.
Yeah. Well, we have a lot of, and the other thing, too, is we have a lot of Aerojet supply chain up here, too. So one of the things we would like to do with Tesla, we got a couple of their supplier companies in their supply chain we're working with right now, and, you know, if we can get them to choose us, you know, as a region, you know, then we can start to go into Tesla and build a case. So a lot of this starts incremental and you got to kind of work up. So we have one pretty close to committing to us, and now you're going to have a supplier for Tesla here that migrated from the east to be closer to Fremont, and now we can start to have this conversation with Tesla, should your supply chain be here? You know, we've got the land, we can move an Aerojet, you know, there's four substations over there. You know, so we are talking to some major corporations about Aerojet. In addition to the land, you know how long it takes you to build a substation? I mean, good luck, that's five to 10 years. We have four of them and they're SMD. And as you know, that's probably the best utility in the state of California to work with. So it's starting to kind, you know, and this one, I mean, about business modeling, you got to connect the dots, you know, so this California Mobility Center may actually be the driver of Tesla paying attention to us, and it could be the driver of, of the Aerojet site being redeveloped. And then once people start to look at it and you see the kind of assets that are at Aerojet, I mean, you can't, you can't even build those assets in California anymore. You know, all the roads and all the power infrastructure underneath it, I mean, if you tried to cite something like that somewhere in California, it wouldn't even be possible. So there's some real unique advantages here, we just got to keep, you know, we need probably a bigger investment-grade developer at Aerojet, somebody like a Trammell Crow or a Heinz, somebody with a little more balance sheet. You know, we're cautiously optimistic about MLS, keeping our fingers crossed, but if we're, if we're able to land MLS, you know, we're now a two-major sports team community that's four months of television of being on, that's a, that's an asset that millennials love, we think we can really appeal to the Bay Area. You know, we're hoping that if we get MLS, like the SAC Republic will be the, you know, 49ers or the Giants, you know, we got a lot of 49er and Giants fans here, also Raiders, but, and most people are Giants fans. So now all of a sudden, you know, that Bay Area-
Yes, we are.
It's most people.
We are.
Sorry about that.
Down, gentlemen.
Never bring up teams, that's like a classic mistake. But I think, I think what I'd like to see is the idea that, hey, the Bay Area's MLS team is ours. And I think you're going to see all that move forward in the next three to five years, and I, I do think it's going to be exciting. So I congratulate the city manager on this proposal and his team, and we're very excited about it, and, and I think we're going to get some nice success with this effort. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fun topic.
Yeah. Thank you for giving us the information, Nick, it's great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So quickly, in closing, I know I covered a lot of the information pretty quickly, but there are some, you know, general reporting requirements, of course, for any program. Um, we're really looking for these companies to retain the position for two years. Um, and of course, all of our other incentive programs, which we currently manage in Economic Development, will remain in existence and will be utilized by primarily our small businesses and our startups. So at this point, I know Barry was very kind and answered a lot of your questions, but I'll also know about for questions, and then after questions, we will ask the council consider the adoption of the resolution establishing the jobs and attraction program.
So I don't have a question, I just have a comment, though. It's very enlightening to, to have statistical information about our validation that when people pick up and move their company lock, stock, and barrel, their employees don't choose to go. You know, that, that it's, I've been a part of that twice, and it just always seems to me that that's really the only conclusion, especially if you are moving to someplace with a totally different climate and, and a totally different culture and, um, and your family is here. It just doesn't seem logical.
No.
Ask the people from Aerojet that are asked to move to Alabama.
Exactly what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Okay, Cyrus?
No, I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, thank you to our Economic Development Team, and thank you, Barry. Uh, we, I, I think as the mayor mentioned, the possibilities are endless for, for our community. We have so many, so much to offer, and I think this type of incentive programs definitely put us on the map. We, as companies in the Bay Area, look at relocating, having a program like this and being one of the first cities that actually formalizes the incentive program gives us a seat at the table. So, uh, thank you, I think when we talked about this a few months ago, for, uh, we, we felt like this is a program that we need to put in place, but at the same time with the understanding that as we try, as we go through the implementation, we may learn from it, we may have to make some adjustments and some tweaks to the program, but at this point, I, I feel very confident that this is something that will benefit the city economically a great deal.
So, um, if we're ready?
Actually, I, can I, I just want to, I, I just want to thank Cyrus and the Economic Development Team. I know, um, when the Centene deal came down, a lot of us were somewhat disappointed that we didn't, like, why weren't we competing, why weren't we a part of this? And the conversations since then to get to here and actually understand that, you know, we need to publicly say, like, this is what we're willing to do. And empower Barry and the rest of the, the team to actually go out and say, you know, if you want to come here, and then we had the, the same conversation about the, the battery factory for Tesla, which just seems so haphazard, um, that we lost to Reno or whatever, but, you know, there was conversations that it was going to be out here by Mather and, but nobody could get on the same plate, the county's talking to the state but not talking to us. And so I think it's really great that we've gotten to this point. And when you look at even, even where we were a few years ago when Measure H, when we got Measure H, we're like, yeah, these are the things we're going to do with economic development, this, this seems so much more strategic and honed comparatively to what we've been doing, so I, I think it's great, thank you.
Okay, so it looks like-
I was going to say, if there's, uh, open the public and ask if there's any speaker cards on this.
I do not have any.
Anyone want to speak on this? Okay, thank you.
So, um, it looks like we didn't assign a resolution number yet, so I will simply move the resolution of the City Council establishing the Economic Development Jobs and Talent Attraction Program.
Is the motion, do I have a second?
Thank you, Deacon.
Mail call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanders absent, and Mayor McGarvey.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I have your city clerk, round to 12.2, and announce the subject, please.
Staff presentation of proposed five-year pavement rehabilitation plan.
Hello, Albert.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, and Councilmembers, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the city of Rancho Cordova has made significant progress in addressing deferred maintenance within the city, but there is still more work to be done. And so this evening, I'll be presenting a proposed five-year pavement plan for council consideration. This evening, I will provide an update on the current conditions of the Rancho Cordova pavement, present the proposed five-year pavement plan, and I will appreciate council input. First, starting some background, the city of Rancho Cordova, as you all know, is very centrally located, and we have 240 centerline miles of roads within the city. So that is measured along the middle of the road, the length of all of the streets in Rancho Cordova is 240 miles. We measure the condition of a street using a pavement condition index, and this ranges from zero to 100, with a lower number being a poor level of condition of the road and higher numbers being a better road. So from zero to 25 is poor and failed, 25 to 50 is poor, 50 to 70 is a fair road, and 70 to 100 is a road that's in good condition. To give you an idea of what those mean, a pavement condition index of 100 is a very good road, that's a road that's smooth, has very few, if any, cracks in it, it's a newly overlaid or a newly built road. Pavement condition, condition index of 70 is the high end of fair. We may start seeing some cracks in the road and some wear of the surface, but in general, the, the road is smooth and in relatively good condition. A pavement condition index of 57 is the low end of fair and is approaching poor. At this point, we'll start to see some cracking, uh, and it could be generally wider than we would see in pavements of, of fair, of fair condition. So some more cracking and the cracks might be wider. And then in a failed road, we have significant cracking, wide cracks, potholes, and very possibly an uneven surface is a lower pavement condition index. It's really important that we understand what the pavement condition index is, because that tells us what kind of treatments we likely need to do for that road. And the earlier and more often we can treat a road, generally the more cost-effective it is to treat that road. So roads that are in the good condition, we can do relatively simple surface treatments, usually less than $10 a square yard. As we get into fair roads, we start doing asphalt overlays, um, so putting a new wearing course on top of the roadway is for fair roads. As we get into roads that are poor, now we have areas that need to be replaced within the road, although probably not the entire road needs to be replaced and then overlaid. Many of our, um, the roads that I'll be talking, presenting to you this evening are in that 25 to 50 range. And it's important to identify roads that are within that category because they're very close, um, time-wise, within a matter of several years, depending upon the amount of traffic, they can move into very poor or failed, and very quickly, the cost to do the rehabilitation of those roads actually doubles. And if you look at the, from the good roads at about $6 a square yard to the very poor roads at $56 a square yard, it can cost as much as almost 10 times more to do a full depth rebuild of that road than it is to do superficial treatments at the beginning.
Just a question on that. When you have a road that's in very good or good and it's $6, does the $6 cost for, say, a two-inch rubberized asphalt cover on that?
That is for, for roads in that condition, they usually don't need that level of rehabilitation. So that would be more like a slurry seal, uh, which is a thin new course of oil and small aggregate to rejuvenate the surface and provide a new wearing, wearing surface.
Okay, thank you.
So I need another background question. When we talk about this particular program, is this the sum total of road improvements or, and does this count the money that is set aside from the Community Enhancement Fund?
Yes, the way that we have budgeted this, and I'll dive in as we go ahead in this conversation, um, we have budgeted, including Community Enhancement Fund dollars that have been, that the city council has been allocating to the program.
Okay.
The city of Rancho Cordova, although we do have our own challenges to address, we're in a relatively good position. Our, our average pavement condition index for the entire road is 69, which is higher than the statewide pavement condition index of 65. And we're in relatively better condition than some of our neighbors. The county of Sacramento, for example, has a pavement condition index of 50, um, they have very significant challenges ahead of them. It's important for us to understand, even though we have a pavement condition index of 69, which is an enviable position and the high end of fair, we still have, still need to understand the distribution of those pavement conditions. A little over half of our roads are in a good- A little over half of our roads are in a good and very good condition. Almost a quarter of them are in a fair condition. The challenge we have is almost 20% of them are in a poor and failed condition. And as I had mentioned earlier, the roads in, that are in a good condition are less expensive to maintain, and those roads in a fair, and certainly the roads in a poor condition are more expensive to maintain. So, now diving into the current conditions of Rancho Cordova. Here, this is a map of all of the roads with the condition color-coded. Roads that are highlighted in green are in good and very good condition, and the blue and yellow is fair. Roads in the orange and red are in poor and very poor condition. So, looking at this map, you can see there are relatively newly roads that were constructed within the last decade in the southeast of the city that are in good condition. In the north of the city, you can see significant progress that the city has made in our existing communities as well, in highlighted in green, but also some areas that need to be addressed. And we'll talk more about those in the next minute or two.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Just a personal observation. And I guess I tend to take what I would consider backroads through our industrial area more often these days, commuting to Placer County. I am really surprised at the amount of red, and you're highlighting it here, of our industrial park, and how deteriorated that has gotten over, over the years. I mean, I know there's a lot of heavy equipment that's going through there, but that, that has been very eye-opening for me in, like, the last six months or so. But obviously, this is, this is clearly pointed out.
You're absolutely correct. The, the number of loads, and in addition, the weight of those loads are two of the criteria that have the greatest effect on the rate of deterioration of roads. And we're absolutely seeing that in the industrial areas. That and sometimes since some of the latest rehabilitations in those areas. So, one of several challenges we're looking to address. As I'd mentioned, the average pavement condition index is 69. The city has an ongoing revenue stream over 10 years of about $40 million, and that does include contributions from community enhancement funds. This is significantly augmented. The city has been very, very successful in obtaining grants which go on top of that $40 million. And over the last five to 10 years have ranged from about $2.5 to $3.5 million a year, which have gone towards pavement rehabilitation. The cost of maintaining that pavement and condition index of 69, which is the high end of fair over 10 years, is about $80 million, and includes the cost that we, we contribute towards repairing adjacent sidewalks as we're progressing with this project. There's a shortfall of about $5 million if we continue to be as successful as the city has been in obtaining grants, to about $40 million over the course of the next 60 years, excuse me, over the course of the next 10 years to maintain a pavement condition index of 69. Looking at if we were to increase the pavement condition index up to an 80 over the course of next 10 years, which would be an 11-point increase, that's a cost of about $140 million to move the needle that far. And the shortfall for that commensurally would be about $65 million if we continued to be as successful as we have been in obtaining grants, up to about $100 million. The city has been, made great progress since incorporation and has invested approximately $100 million into street and sidewalk maintenance since incorporation. And this has made significant progress on residential roads that I've highlighted in blue there. You can see those are the areas that are green, blue and yellow, indicating very good, good and fair condition of those roads. So, looking forward to the proposed five-year rehabilitation plan, staff recommends that in 2020, we proceed with a rehabilitation of Sunrise Boulevard, generally between Folsom Boulevard and White Rock Road. We were also successful in obtaining a $2.5 million grant in this last funding round, which would go towards that project. This also includes community enhancement funds. Staff recommends in 2021 to proceed with a rehabilitation of Mather Field Road, which would extend generally from Folsom Boulevard down to International. Also, in, beginning in 2021, would be a three-year program, including 2021, 22, and 23, to rehabilitate the roads within the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood highlighted in green on your screen. And then finally, the last year of the five-year program would be the Mills Ranch neighborhood. And with that, staff recommends that City Council provide feedback and direct staff to proceed with implementation of the proposed five-year rehabilitation plan. And I would ask for any council thoughts or input.
Go.
No, I think it's great. I think you guys have been doing great work, and I think I'm fine with the plan.
Okay, so I realize that, that you're also balancing not just the, the finite pavement index, pavement condition index, but you're also balancing the amount of traffic on the road. I mean, obviously, that's going to, that's going to make a difference in, in your, that's going to be factored into the way in which you calculate all this. From my perspective, because I drive both Sunrise and Mather Field routinely, and I would flip them. I would put the priority on Mather Field to the extent that we control a certain portion of Mather Field, and, because I just don't think Sunrise is, personally, I don't, doesn't seem to me Sunrise is that bad. So, then we come to the issue of something like Ariman. And it's quite clear that in the residential area, there is a couple of, there's a couple of streets. There's, there's Ariman down in Lincoln Village. There is what I think is Vanguard coming in off of Route 2. I think, nope, actually, that's not. That's Rockingham. That's a section of Rockingham. There is a, and then there's a couple of other pieces. And from my perspective, it's just the way we talked with Cyrus about 10, a good 10 years ago. The fact that the Lincoln Village neighborhood, Lincoln Village Drive, was at such dramatic condition that a bicycle ride was painful. And I mean literally painful because of the alligatoring in the pavement. Okay? So, so it's also a matter of civic pride. So, it would seem more logical to break out a couple of truly disintegrated roads and repair those as a priority, even though you would like to do the whole neighborhood at one time because it's more logical. But on the other hand, it just doesn't seem logical to completely ignore the ones that are so clearly red. So, that's my perspective.
Lynn Girbert?
I'm the opposite. I'd like to see Sunrise first because I drive the road every day, and please, please fix that. But on, I do agree with her, the red, the red roads that are, that are in the most disarray are something on civic pride, and I'd love to see if we could have a plan to at least address a couple of those to get them out of the way. And then I like the plan thus far. If there's a way we can focus more and help out also along some of the business corridors that are getting run down as we're getting ready to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into bringing businesses in, or maybe even a center plan that goes with the business if they were to help fix the roads, and you could have some way they could fill in as they come into the city, always a benefit because a lot of them are willing to make their new spots look better and probably pay for road treatments if they had some way to do that.
Bob, can I weigh in? So, and I drive Sunrise every day. I would tend to agree with Linda, I think, though. Now, depending on funding and grant, and grant, like, I don't want to jeopardize, like, if that's got to go first because we got to spend $10 million or $5 million of Fed money, then fine, do that. But if, if you're asking us as a choice, to me, the opportunity with Mather Field is we're, we're upgrading it right at the time that we're talking about a new community facility there. And so, you know, with the community college, with what we're talking about there, it's kind of, it's kind of the same idea of, you know, finishing off Folsom Boulevard for the opportunities that might come from it. Sunrise is going to be busy no matter what we do to it. So, and to be honest with you, more commuters from out of town are using that, that I'm less concerned about their opinion than I am my residents. So, and I, so I think Mather would be the logical choice first. But again, if, if the timing of these are tied to specific funding, go do what you have to do to make sure that we spend everybody, all of the, the other people's money than ours. So, however that works. But I would tend to agree, even though, again, I, I don't drive that street nearly as much as I used to when I lived over there. I think with what else we're trying to work on in that area, that's, that's why we put the priority, especially going along with what you just did on Route 2. So, if we're kind of building out that neighborhood and kind of, Mather makes more sense to me than the other, for now.
Go back one page, so to speak, on this, so we can see the current conditions, future legend, you can see the very poor and red and orange and that one, yeah. Exactly what we're talking about, we're saying very poor. I'm trying to find little red spots here and little red spots there. Is that roads that are really used a lot, but those would be the ones that would need to be repaired also? I mean, if you need to have a completely repaired before you can resurface or anything, that's your red, correct? Yeah, so why not spend some time on that? And as far as, then Mather would be another they were saying. But I think some of the ones that are showing red and very poor, those are the ones that are dangerous for the people on bicycles and people on, just walking, much less roads.
To the point of the person from the public, Ariman is on, is in red.
Yeah. Well, and anyway you look at it, because of the traffic patterns, Rockingham has a higher traffic count perhaps than some other residential sections. And Ariman, because it is such a connector between Folsom Boulevard and Coloma, also has a higher traffic count than some other residential sections. And those are the two that, I think there's a chunk of Old Placerville Road that's red, but that's, aside from commute hours, that doesn't get the same amount of traffic.
And we have some residential streets that people are still, I haven't had, there's the lady at church that used to tell me, I mowed the lawn on the street today, and I thought, well, you had a crack. But that's something that we still have to pay attention to because that's where people are there every day when it's in front of their house, right? And when we became a city, you know, we were, we've been doing some phenomenal things in the 16 years we've been a city, and we had 50 years of neglect to take over. So, we're still trying to make up on some of the neglect, and that's understood. But people want things done just like everyone does, and they want it done in their neighborhood. They want it done in their streets that they usually use. So, I'm glad that we're able to do that. I'm really very glad that you're getting the grants that you're able to get. I know Cyrus got a grant and allowed us to do Sunrise Boulevard and smooth it out and make it look a nice road. And it took a little, another year or so for the county to do the rest of it to the Sunrise Bridge. But that sort of thing is, you know, in addition to our regular budget, in addition to the Measure H money, and it's all, you know, getting there. But there are some things, when it says it's very poor, then it makes me kind of worry about people that walk on it, ride bikes on it, or drive their cars in it. I don't want someone to have their axle cracked because there's such a bad chuckle or something in the road, you know?
Oh, I feel like I, I drive Mather Field so often that I feel like I need to go through and tighten every nut on the, on the car. But we do, we do really want to thank Albert and acknowledge the fact that historically, Public Works has been absolute masterful at getting grant money. And, and we, you know, we don't want to make light of that because it's really an incredible skill and has made such a difference.
Yeah.
Mr. May, if I may just add a comment. If, I believe Mayor McGarvey and Councilmember Budge remember the, one of the presentations that we made in 2004. This was shortly after the city hood, and we had done the same level of study that Albert presented today related to the pavement condition index, and that number was scary. It was in terms of the years of neglect that Mayor talked about and the, just the sheer volume of work that needed to be done to get to this point. So, while we still have a long way to go and we still have some work to do, but having spent $100 million in the last 15 years since the city hood is no small feat. So, I just want for this council to feel good about this, and, and I think while this challenge is still seems big, but we can, I'm sure, I'm very positive that we can make it work.
Yeah. Can, can you go, is it the slide, the next slide with the times on it, the years? Yeah. So, again, from what I'm hearing, if I'm looking at these, if Sunrise was to be a later year and you did Mather first, could you do Mills Ranch or some of the vineyards? Because to me, that, to me, I think that's, that's more of my priority, too. I, I think the worst part of Sunrise has been fixed, which was north of the highway to, to the bridge. That, that was worse than the rest of it, in my opinion. And, and we've even had some improvements there where it, where International runs into it, it's been redone with the bridge and some other stuff. So, I'm, I'm less concerned about, and again, that's, I'm somebody who drives that every single day. But yeah, I mean, if, if I was looking at this, trying to give you feedback, and again, I don't want to jeopardize any kind of funding, but if you did $4 million for, for Mather, could you come back and do a third of the vineyards? Because I agree with him, Ariman's horrible, but there's a lot of other streets over there that are, that are bad, too. But maybe there's a way to do that, but that, that would be my, my, for next year, that, those would be my priorities.
If I may add, one of the challenges with deferring Sunrise Boulevard is that we have a $2.5 million grant that Secog, Secog has awarded to the city. So, we would need to...
Then we have to do it.
That was the question.
We would need to go back to Secog and tell them that we're, we're modifying the timing of, of expenditure of those dollars if we were to, if we were to switch that.
And if that, if we jeopardize that funding, then just do that first because that, yeah. We want to spend everyone else's money first, not our own, so, yeah.
I, I think, you know, if, if I understand the council correctly, it looks like the geographic areas are supported, it's just mostly the timing. So, I think let's, let's allow Public Works staff to have some discussions with Secog and understand more of the funding details before we lay down the timing.
Yeah, the, the locations are absolutely appropriate.
Yeah, I don't want to jeopardize any of the money that we've had given, granted, whatever, to the city. We wouldn't want to put any of that aside because it's going to help everyone in the long run. So, we don't want to lose any of that. I'm going to open public and ask if we have any cards on this.
I have one speaker card from Angel Ball.
Do I need to fill out another one?
If you would like to speak, yes. No, I'm kidding. I can use your current card. I can use your current card, it's fine.
Stacy Leiner should be here all night.
Good evening. My name is Angel Ball, and I...
My name is Angel Ball, and I live in the Cordova Vineyards. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
You can? This one? Okay. I am here to speak on the Vineyards Road Plan. I want to say the sooner the better. The Vineyards was paved on July tenth in nineteen ninety-two, and I think that so far we've gotten a really good run on those roads, but it's been, let's see, twenty-seven years? And by the time we implement this plan, it might be thirty. I do support the plan, obviously. I'd like to see my roads paved, and please don't take the Vineyards off the list. I would like to be sure that Aramont is done first. Tomorrow would be great. I have spoken to Public Works, and if you give them the money, however, Measure H, grants, whatever, that they'll do the road as soon as they get the money. Chardonnay, Malaga, and Dalseto, the Cordova Vineyards is kind of like our main roads in, and then the little neighborhood streets float off of that, so they're, they're in need of repair. I would like to see some clearer marked bike lanes, if that's appropriate, on those streets. Let's see. I'm looking forward to seeing the plan for the Vineyards. I'm not sure if every street is going to be touched, so Albert, I would like at some point to see that diagram. And there are a couple of other things that would spruce up our neighborhood. Obviously, roads is number one. We in the Vineyards would really like some stuff built on the empty lots that we have on investment and by the fire station, so we would like to see those built. And it would be great if we could figure out how to get a P bid for Folsom Boulevard. The Vineyards does have a portion of the Folsom Boulevard, and that would help clean up our neighborhood also. Thank you.
Court?
Getting dangerous when you know my first name already.
No, that's good, that's good.
Well, in some ways it is. Okay, I liked the number sixty-nine, because I happen to be sixty-nine. Sixty-nine's a good number. Do you know what Aramont rate was, the PCI index was, when the city council took over? I'll give you a hint, I got, I got the freedom from information. It was rated at twenty-nine. Thirteen years ago, Aramont was a twenty-nine. We're looking to try to get to sixty-nine, that'd be great. In thirteen years, you know what we've done? Fill potholes. If you get the information from what they've done from Aramont, from the city archives, it will show you nothing but rows and rows and rows of filling potholes. And you know what the advantage of that was? Like, five, five years ago, they did a retest, and our road went from twenty-nine to thirty-one. So, may if we keep putting, filling the potholes, it'll go up to forty? I don't agree with you about Sunrise. Sunrise is great, except on the other side, when you go to Folsom Boulevard. You want to look a road really bad? Check White Rock, that people use all the time to try to get over to, to Grant Line. It's, it's rated at fifty-five mile an hour. You can't wholly hold a car on it, it's so badly rutted. Aramont also is a main thoroughfare for the, for the fire department, so it does get heavy use. It is one chunk to the other, and it's not rated fair. I can't see how you could call that road fair, it's a disaster. Same as, I haven't heard anybody say anything about McGregor. McGregor's a disaster, too, and it, I would guess it gets more traffic than Aramont does. So, I've seen Coloma paved a couple of times already, I've seen, I don't know how many times we're going to do Folsom Boulevard, every time I turn around, something else is getting torn up and redone, especially down by where it goes over, under the freeway. You know, it's nice that we're doing all these things, but you've got to start taking care of the people who've been here over thirty years, unless you want to just tell me that two or three years from now, you might come in and do something. Why just keep putting, filling the potholes? If that's cheaper, we could do that for the whole community, which you really have done to all of the old community, because that's why it's red. Sixty-nine is from all the new housing that's gone in, we know that, we're not stupid. Try taking an average of the houses or the communities that are older than twenty years and see what the roads rate. I bet our average roads don't rate much more than thirty-five in the older sections of Vance-Cordova. I've lived on that street thirty years. The house was built in nineteen sixty-five. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Darryl Langwell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Darryl Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. I just wanted to kind of follow up on something that the previous speaker said. Aramont is a major thoroughfare for the fire department if they have to go towards the river from Station sixty-one. I don't know whether we could convince the county to throw in a little bit of money to help protect their equipment or anything, or whether there might be some sort of special safety grant that we might be able to look at. But it would sure be nice if there was something that could be done to help alleviate some of that, some of that really heavy equipment that goes over there because, or either that or when the road is redone, see if it can be structurally upgraded so that it won't be beat up as badly by the heavy equipment from the fire department. Thank you.
Just a reminder, the county doesn't run the fire district out here, it's their own district.
Whoever.
And, and they, they always say they don't have enough money.
Whoever's pocket we can reach into.
Hence my reasoning, or his comment about Sunrise. We want to spend everyone else's money first.
Also, just to be clear, Aramont is located within the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood, and so it is a part of this plan?
All right.
That would be part of the, that would be the twenty-one to twenty-three, right?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any other cards from the public?
No.
Anyone else speak, want to speak on this item?
So, do we need a motion? We have another speaker? Oh, I'm sorry. It's in action.
Greetings, ma'am.
Thank you. Meeta Keshat from Cordova Meadows. A couple of years ago, Cordova Meadows was paved, and when we talked about the project at first, there was, well, this street was going to be paved, but we weren't going to go into the cul-de-sac, where a few things were not on the plan. And then Cyrus and Albert said, "We're going to pave the whole thing," and that was a good choice. All the streets, cul-de-sacs, everything was paved. Not only that, but they put new storm drains in and bigger pipes. It was a wonderful project, and I think their change in plans was really a good one. The whole neighborhood, including, I believe, the Tiffany was repaved, too, which wasn't even on the plan, but that whole area was taken care of, and it was a wonderful improvement. And my suggestion is that you do think about the same thing when you go into some of these other neighborhoods, and do the whole thing and do it right. And my suggestion is that we take some of those Measure H funds that are for, my term, feel-good projects, and put that pot into the infrastructure and get some of these things done faster, and, and it would be a great boon to the residents. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
So...
Anyone else in the public? Seeing to another, I'm going to close the public and ask, we have a motion.
So, I will move approval of the, the locations of the five-year pavement rehab plan, and direct staff to come back with some other suggestions about timing. Does that sound appropriate?
Could, I'd be happy to second, I, but maybe we could word that a little differently. To, why don't you take a look and explore, I think, what the guidance of two of us have said, which would be prioritize Mather and the local roads, Cordova Vineyards plan over the Sunrise plan, if it does not jeopardize any secured funding outside of the city.
I think I, I still hear that as a timing issue, so as long as the council endorses the list, then we can work on the timing.
You're fine with that, okay, okay.
That's good.
So, I have seconded.
Okay, I have a motion to second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood? Vice Mayor Sanders absent, and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, ask the city council if we have any requests for future agenda items.
I do.
You do, yes.
I don't want to make more work for, for Albert.
But.
But. It seems to me we need a report from Caltrans on the status of the Zinfandel overpass. It does not strike me that they are prosecuting this project with any alacrity.
I heard that from somebody before.
There are too many days when they're not working. Today, the temperature was eighty-two, and, and it was a perfectly beautiful sunny day, and they weren't working.
I, I, Albert, you want to address that?
Am I correct in, are you referring to the, the cities project, constructing the Zinfandel complex improvements?
I thought it was Caltrans.
That is our, our Public Works Department.
I'm sorry, I thought it was Caltrans. Well, then you get to do it.
I can...
Sorry.
We can definitely give you an update on this.
I'd love to have an update.
But I, I believe, Councilmember Budge, isn't some of the work being done at night after, that's, that's the reason you may not observe a whole lot during daytime, because of the traffic delays?
Well, and that's only logical, but it also relates to my question to Albert a couple of weekends ago, not, not the horribly hot weekend, but, but a different couple of weekends ago, where it's, it seemed to me logical that they would be working on a weekend when the traffic is much less than, than it is during the week. And, and certainly, to stop doing what they're doing at Folsom and Zinfandel, which is work in the middle of the lunch hour.
Well, I think we have a project manager in the room. Would you, Mr. Medina, would you like to address the council on this?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Edgar Medina, Public Works Department. Yeah, the Zinfandel complex is, is a city project personally managed by our group, so we do have a lot of night and day work. One of the things that we are having to, to balance is what can be done as part of the structure that isn't being impacted by the work that's being on demo. So, we have two major components of the project, and that's the structure itself, because we're widening the west side of the bridge, and we're primarily doing that during the day, as we're doing all the ramp improvements and widening and demolition on the, on and off ramps during the night. So, why you don't see a lot of work being done during the day is primarily because that's the structure. So, the last couple, at least last week, you would have seen a lot of pile driving that was going on.
There was.
So, that was being done during the day, so that was in conflict. You're going to see a lot more activity during the day on the surface streets, because we have a major operation happening tomorrow that we've coordinated with SMMUD, that's going to free up a lot of work during the day. With regard to, I think you mentioned some work being done at Folsom and Zinfandel, our project doesn't extend that far.
No, I know, no, this is, this is separate. It just, it's just that Steve Herriman and I have had this conversation every time they've opened up the intersection at Folsom and Zinfandel, and they do it at lunch hour, and it just drives everybody bananas. And the traffic on Zinfandel is so bad, anyway. And it just makes no sense whatsoever that they would do this at lunchtime.
Yeah, I agree. I would like to say at the, at the, if, I know it doesn't appear based off the level of activity during the days, but the project is actually ahead of schedule as it stands.
Do tell. Well, good.
So, in light of this explanation, my...
No. I'm fine.
We knocked it out right now.
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
I have a question about something completely different. In light of our really interesting Kids' Day at City Hall, and maybe I should have had that in my report, thank you to staff and everybody that put that on, but our lovely little campfire that we had next door, because of the numbskull that went out here with the wrong equipment to try to knock down weeds and set it on fire again for the second time, I'd like to see if we can work with, with Metro Fire, or if we have the authority to do it ourselves, to actually license who gets to bring that kind of equipment into this city, and, and clear our, I know we have it for tow trucks and a lot of other things, but going out and actually, in some way regulating what kind of, you know, idiots can come out here and try to cut grass for different property owners. Because two years in a row, this, this thing has caught on fire by somebody who's supposed to be preventing fire, and he clearly didn't come out here with the right equipment to do it for the second time in a row. So, I don't know what authority we have with that, but I'd like staff to explore whether or not we can somehow regulate it, or if we can work with Metro Fire to make sure that we're getting the appropriate people to come out and, and do this kind of work.
They didn't get rid of all the fires or all the weeds, though?
Yeah, they still have...
I have another question for you, Albert? Now, I have a question, I have a question that I'm asked almost every day by different people. When is Folsom Boulevard to Bradshaw going to be completed, and the sidewalks and all that sort of thing? I know it's the county and the city and all that sort of thing. Do we have a deadline on when that's going to be completed?
The existing work that you see under construction at this time should be completed within the next four to eight weeks, and then we would proceed on with the final, the fifth and final phase that extends all the way out to Bradshaw Road later this year and with construction proceeding into twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Rootier is pretty slick. It's really quite fascinating.
Looks great.
It's bound to have slowed the traffic down somewhat.
Yeah, we're doing swim lessons over there the last month or so. The parking, everything, it just seems so much more calm and safer there, just the feeling of it, but yeah, no, it looks fantastic.
I definitely appreciate the community's patience. During twenty, twenty eighteen, we've had a lot of construction projects going on over the, particularly this last year and moving into next year, and we have a great team, including Edgar Medina and, and many others, working diligently on all of these projects to, to move them forward.
Thank you very much.
Mr. C. Manager, perhaps just in response to Mr. Terry's questions about fire, we might invite the, the fire district to talk with us about what opportunities to tweak our requirements to possibly address that. It could possibly be something as simple as updating the timing of the required cutting.
No, that has nothing to do, I'm, I'm talking about...
Provider.
Okay, we have, we have a two-by-two with Metro Fire tomorrow afternoon.
Maybe addressing it there, but this isn't a timing issue, this is a competency-to-do-the-work issue.
Yeah.
That we, the same thing that we kind of have when, when it comes to tow trucks and some other things, we say, "You're carrying all of the right things so you can operate within our city." We don't want just somebody with a tractor to be the person that can get hired to come out and clear these things, because he, he was out there preventing fire and he caught it on fire.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
We could, we could explore that and come back to it.
It seems, it seems like we have these agreements in place for some other operations within the city. I'm wondering if we can envelop this into that in some way.
We might be able to address that with some licensing requirements.
Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. But I, I get your point, but yeah, no, the, the point is that the fire prevention work is creating fires, so.
Anything else, folks? Any other?